Good evening. Welcome to the October work session of the Rose Tree Media School Board. The school board holds monthly work sessions to carry out its responsibilities in public as dictated by the Sunshine Law. At these meetings, the board's standing committees conduct the work of the board through discussion with the administration. We welcome the public to these meetings and depending on the length of the agenda, may be able to entertain public comment. If we're not able to address comments, we encourage emails to either committee chairs or the administration. As a reminder to where our conversation should focus, the students are the center of the RTMSD learning community. Our mission states that all students will reach their intellectual, emotional, social, and physical potential in a safe environment that celebrates diversity, individual talents and efforts, and promotes collaboration, caring, respect, and leadership. Students will be well-prepared to create meaningful and productive lives in a global society. All right, so we have a few presentations and we will start with Chester County Intermediate Unit Technology Audit Results. Dr. Malas?
Thank you, Dr. Napson-Williams. I'm very excited for us to receive the presentation from Dr. Saul this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saul and to Mr. Doherty, who is overseeing our technology department for the district this year. Right? A lot of excitement there? We, as we spent a lot of time talking about technology and the use and the purpose, how we structure it, what do we do with it? In the district, we invited the folks from Chester County IU to come in last year to do a full audit. Folks coming in from the outside, that this is their area. This is what they do. So I'm very excited about Dr. Saul, the team that she worked with, that came in to work with our folks, and she's going to deliver a presentation. So Bill and Jessica, over to you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present our technology review. On computer. So the purpose of our review was that we wanted to look at the structure and capabilities of the technology department and whether it meets the needs of the district now and in the future. So we looked at staffing, policies, procedures, the hardware inventory, software, and we looked for strengths, challenges, and areas for improvement. And then we provided a report to provide recommendations so that the district is future-ready with technology. Okay, so our procedure was that we conducted site visits. We went to every building in the district. We went into all the technology closets, not all of them, but most of them. We reviewed documentation from the district such as your comprehensive plan, your strategic plan, which I believe went to 2024. We looked at assets. We looked at budgets, and we conducted interviews with administrators at the central office and the schools. We also spoke with teachers, the technology staff. And what we do is, once we have all this information, we triangulate our findings so that if we are hearing something three times or more, then it becomes a finding. And also, we kept all interviews anonymous because we wanted people to be comfortable and honest sharing information. Okay, so we had three guiding questions for the review. So the first, does the district have appropriate policies, procedures, human resources, and plans in place to meet the technology needs of the students, staff, and community? Second, we looked at the hardware, software, and data systems to see, were they being used efficiently? Were they, do they provide cybersecurity? Do they have the information needed to meet all the academic logistical and safety needs of the district? And finally, we looked at what opportunities the district has to utilize policies, procedures, infrastructure, et cetera, to meet the future needs of the district and the community. Okay, so the key strengths of the district that we found were the infrastructure, the network upgrades, the wireless, the hardware. So all the operational technology that runs the district is very strong. The staff, we heard very positive feedback about the building technicians and their customer service. Cybersecurity, your infrastructure is protected. There are minimal incidents. In this day and age, 90% of education is hit with ransomware attacks. And if you're prepared, then you don't lose data, you don't lose instructional time, and the district is in a good position. Also, devices. The district's committed to having modern devices and refresh cycles for the staff so that the one-to-one program is successful. Some of the key challenges, as we stated before I started, organizational structure. There's been some changes of leadership in the technology division recently, over the last year. And a recent move last school year was to separate the instructional and operational technology into two different teams, which isn't a negative in itself being split. It was more of how the staff responded to that change. Also, staff turnover is a concern because there are experts within the district that hold a lot of the information and knowledge themselves. So everyone's highly dependent on one person. And if that person should get sick, resign, retire, that it puts the district in a difficult position because that knowledge will leave with that person if it's not well-documented and there isn't cross-training. And that leads into single points of failure is when you rely too much on one person, it creates vulnerabilities. And it also slows down higher-level technology issues from being resolved quickly because it kind of bottlenecks when you're dependent on one person. And technology can be very reactive because there are always things coming up with technology in all the different systems. It's just a fact of technology. Policies and processes. The district does not have a policy on artificial intelligence. And currently, that is very important because you want to be sure of showing people what is permitted and what is prohibited. Because if you don't put it in writing, people might go on their own and on a personal device, might work, try and write up an evaluation or something, and that's personally identifiable information could possibly get out. So you want to prevent misuse and also protect the district from any potential legal matters. Some of the technology policies were inconsistent or unclear, and some staff tended to have difficulty articulating what those policies were. And some of the procurement processes were confusing for some staff as well. Professional development-wise, when you have a staff that's as busy as your technology staff, you become limited on how you can integrate that instructional technology into the classroom or have professional development. So many teachers feel like they were given the resources for the basic use of a new technology such as the interactive flat panels, but they didn't feel like they knew how to use it more than, say, as a projector. They didn't get deeper into the features that the technology offers. For the user experience side, the district is working at upgrading equipment, but some of the aging AV equipment is unreliable. We heard about, I believe, PA systems, microphones, some things that are just, don't work consistently. And some of the older devices, I think the older, I think they were smart boards, but they might have an Apple TV and an Epson projector, and they're not compatible. And teachers and the instructional technology staff would like more input on device selection. It was heavily relied on the operational side, so the decisions were being made from more of a technology lens than an instructional lens. And then also, student device durability. Chromebooks are highly affordable. They're great to use because everything's Chrome. It's saved in the cloud. However, they are fragile devices, and we know that students can be rough with them. So here's our main recommendations. Within the technology department, with things shifting, is establishing a clear chain of command. And within the department itself, creating cross-functional teams. There are people that do infrastructure. There's instruction. There's data with the student information system. That if you have cross-functional teams, you have people sharing ideas, getting, growing, and getting stronger. But you also have the ability for staff to shadow others and upskill so that all the knowledge doesn't live with one person. So that leads into the cross-training as well, because you don't want to depend on one person. And with technology in education, that is a common theme. For policy and processes, we are recommending developing a technology vision and mission aligned with the district goals. Many staff could not articulate what the mission of the technology department was. Central office, they knew, but when you got into the buildings, they weren't as familiar with what the mission would be. Also, formalizing procurement and software vetting procedures is important. You don't want to end up with teachers purchasing technology and not using it or different schools purchasing technology that has a similar function. You want to have a centralized process so that you can pick what is believed to be the best tool as far as pedagogy, but cybersecurity as well. Let's see. Create an AI policy for staff and students and review administrative workflows to improve efficiency. We were told some things still exist on paper, and there are forms that have to be filled out in triplicate. So there's some efficiencies that can be made just by digitizing processes. For professional development, implement a comprehensive plan for intermediate and advanced instructional technology use. It could start with a pilot. You tend to have teachers that are more at the forefront of technology and willing to do that experimentation. And in most school districts too, when you have certain teachers that become those experts, other teachers go to them, and they share that knowledge. Also, designating technology integration coaches or liaisons at each building. I believe it's for instructional technology people at this time, and you have more buildings than that. And for infrastructure and systems, we're recommending adopting single sign-on for all systems. And what that means is, you only need one password, and that the systems are integrated so that it saves anyone time and energy, and students, they can log on very easily from one dashboard to the different systems. And then looking possibly at more durable student devices in the future. If the Chromebooks continue to be in high need of repair, I believe it's this building, where there's significant time spent by the tech repairing devices. So that limits what he can help in other areas and streamline the repair process. Maybe have multiple people who can do that and that they're both working on devices. So in conclusion, Rose Tree Media School District really has a strong foundation and commitment to providing the technology needed for the students. It's in your vision, but there needs to be more alignment and leadership capacity built for the technology department. Implementing our recommendations will promote collaboration, sustainability, and instructional impact. It's really important that instructional tech and operational tech are aligned because not only do you want everything to work, but you also want to be able to capture that data to see what's helping the students and what isn't. So I keep switching. Acknowledgements. I want to thank the team that I had that came out. We had Brian Rosensky, Nicole Raffner, Mike Martinez, and Miguel Torres. They're from my team. Mike and Miguel were focused on the hardware side of things and the infrastructure, and the rest of us were with looking at instruction and operational alignment. And thank you to the school district, all the administrators, teachers, and technology staff. We had a high level of participation and input in the process. So are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I was just wondering, when you say a more durable device, I know that we just switched from the iPads to the Chromebooks. What other options are there? And what is the cost, I guess, in comparison?
Well, fortunately, the costs are starting to come down, and they're more even. Apple products always do have a little bit more expense to them. There's Lenovo laptops. It depends on, again, aligning with operational tech, whether you're a Windows system or a Google system. Chromebooks are built for students because they're inexpensive, and you can replace it. Like if you have a few left over, replace them easily. It's just that if students are a little rough, you're going to lose keys. You're going to crack screens. But some of that can be, you know, teachers and classroom management and teaching the kids how to respect the devices.
Yeah, the policy committee has been working on an AI policy, and we have gone through a few drafts of it. We've looked at the PSBA draft. We've looked at the DCIU draft. They had a different one. We've looked at some other districts. Does the Chester County Intermediate Unit also have their own version of it?
So we embedded, right now, we have it embedded within our acceptable use policy. However, we even believe it needs to be more robust than we have it right now. We're actually doing an AI book study with CCIU staff, our superintendents, and our board, and we plan to further develop. But my highest recommendation was going to be the PSBA policy because that's pretty much was given as a standard.
You had mentioned that there were other policies too earlier in one of your slides. Is there a list that maybe you've provided to the districts so we know what to?
Yeah, I'll have to look. It's more internal policies than board policies that we're referring to. More, yeah, procedures and practices. For example, requesting technology. If you want a new device, there were teachers who also spoke that the devices that they have didn't have enough RAM or didn't have specific capabilities for what they were teaching. Like you have a graphic design teacher, they're going to need something maybe a little different than your standard ELA or math teacher.
Right, okay. One other question is maybe for Joe or Bill. So will you report out at some point the path forward from here?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's one of our, it was very nice working with everyone from the CCIU, and thank you for presenting. And many of the things in here, we've known and know, and some of them we've already started working on, while others, we have to plan for the future. So there were really no, I would say, major surprises here. Some of the findings, I think, are really a function of change happening faster than we do, right? So working in silos, people need different expertise, and education has just changed. The amount of online products that kids have access to and teachers have access to, right? And then they get emailed a free, you know, hey, try this out for free, and then we like it, and then we can get, you know. So all of those things, like it really requires better systems than we have in place right now to manage. And a lot of, again, the expertise, we need to, again, we know that we need to uptrain some of our staff and just relook and repurpose some of the staff that we have and relook at our organizational structure a little bit within the department.
You brought up a really good point about the volume of applications available. Instructure, which is a company that does Canvas and a few other academic products. They put out the EdTech Top 40 every year. On average, in the classroom, the students are using about 40 different applications as well as the teacher. But the average per school district is, I think, around 1,300 different applications. So it's intense. There's a lot out there, and I can't tell you how many emails a day we probably get from these vendors about this. And then AI has exponentially increased the pace.
I actually have a question about that. With AI and with some of the features that like Google has, like Google Classroom, et cetera, do you see any of, do you see any of those offerings maybe kind of going by the wayside when one of these larger companies really starts to set up entire programs within their LLMs?
There's like what's behind it. I think Microsoft Nvidia is investing in Microsoft like $100 billion. I see it being like other technology in that AI might exist, but then you're going to have school AI. There's another one, I think, Magic School AI, but they're going to parse it out, and they're going to make it specific to different functionalities, right? So use this search engine when you want to create a lesson plan for your students. Use this one when you want to develop policies internally and administrative uses. The main thing to keep in mind with AI is that if it is being used in the school, it's in a closed environment so that confidential information does not get leaked out to the internet because you have burpa, hipa, copa, like you have all these restrictions. So we're actually at the CCIU working with a vendor to, just to pilot even a closed system for education in general, where we're going to see if we can feed it school code, different policies, and see if we can create something specific to education because education's never on the forefront of what industries are being, getting the most technology catered toward them. We have to kind of create it ourselves. But also, within your county, Sam Ormando, who's tech director at Garnet Valley, he has a company, Edvadav. He's moved forward with some AI. And I believe Mifaktin School District is using Edvadav's tools to kind of create their own internal system where you can query things specific to the organization. So maybe if a teacher has an HR question, you can put it in and learn your district's policies.
Are they, Rag? Are you familiar with Rag system? Okay, forget my question.
I have one other question, and thank you for your presentation. It was so clear, and I'm really glad that you did this. For the challenges that came up, were there any notable differences between what you heard at the elementary level versus secondary? Or were they pretty much universal?
There was more with the Chromebooks at the middle school level because I don't think the Chromebooks have been rolled out in elementary yet, so there was a difference.
But not a surprise.
It tends to be different because the use of technology is different. Where when you're in the high school and the interactive flat panels are the new thing, that's what was being spoken about. Or needing equipment specific to teaching subjects because it might have different computer needs than, say, just subject matter in the middle school or the elementary school. But not on the whole, the feedback was pretty consistent. But like everyone said, I mean, already there were some wireless issues. They've been fixed. So the district is very committed to just to keep moving forward. I mean, this was, for me, of all the tech reviews I've done in the last 12 years, one of the easiest because of the commitment this district has to its students in providing technology.
Do we have anything else from the board? Okay, I'm going to recognize community members if they have a question. I will just emphasize that if you could just be clear and direct with your question or comment because I have to repeat it for people who are listening online, and I want to be accurate.
Certainly. I do have questions from the director. There was something you said that makes me ask this question. Aren't all tech purchases centralized within this district?
There's a, okay, there's a question about whether all tech purchases are centralized within the district.
There is approval process, and all the purchasing goes through, eventually through our business office. But there are times, school districts do have their own budgets, but we monitor that in the central office. However, my point was really like a teacher could sign up for a software product that we're not aware of. They get an email. They get an advertisement to sign up for free. They have the capability of doing that. When it then comes to purchasing, then it would have to come to someone at central office to approve that purchase. The trouble is, sometimes they're like, well, I've been using this with my students for three weeks for free, and now we'd like to purchase it. And then sometimes we have to say, well, we're sorry. You're going to have to find something similar because we haven't budgeted for that, right? So that happens sometimes.
This has to be the online thing. The audio is terrible. Absolutely terrible.
Okay.
Teresa, I can hear you when I walk in.
Thank you.
But I can't hear anyone.
Okay, I thought we were doing better. We still have work to do. I would just suggest that, this is a question about the online audio, so people who are listening, you know, email us and maybe give us your perspective as well. But I know I've mentioned in the past, board members, you know, just project, speak up.
Can I ask a question? Is it more legislative or more work session?
Work session. Sometimes I attend legislative online, and it's really the legislative meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
It was great. Thank you.
All right, so we have another, we have another presentation. We have the K-1 Center update from Dr. Malas and ICS and the Schrader Group. We'll begin in a couple of seconds. We just got to get set up. Maybe somebody can share the score of the Phillies game.
Zero, zero.
Okay, no, the Phillies, is that the Phillies? All right, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you for having us back. Phil Solomon with Yanni Vardhu-Niotis. I'm trying to get his last name right. I'm probably doing a bad job.
Much better.
We have a very brief presentation tonight. Not a lot in way of design to show you. We're just going to go through a little bit of what you've seen already. And then we have a couple other things. You may have seen some activity on sites. We'll talk about that a little bit as well as how we're moving into design development. I'll speak briefly about the land development process, which we started, you know, quite a while ago. But where we're at right now, budget and the next steps. So this is just a quick review. I mean, you saw this. This is the stuff that Jennifer Grafton from Schrader Group presented last time. It's just a quick refresher. You know, this is kind of the building layout. You can see the first floor plan where you have an academic wing on one side. You have the community on the other side, second floor plan. And then they had some nice renderings to kind of give you an idea of what it may look like, you know, just kind of beautiful roof lines, et cetera. Front, and then some internal renderings. And of course, this is where we are at schematic. They're just kind of renderings. This is not exactly what the building's going to look like, but it's what it could look like. I'm going to hand it over to Yanni for a second just to talk about what we're doing in design development as well as onsite right now.
All right, thank you, Phil. Over the last, so the worst thing that can happen for us as designers and construction managers is the day the faculty and staff show up to the building during our ribbon coming, and they walk around, they go, oh my God, why did they do this, right? So that's our biggest fear. That's something we don't want, right? So we want, when everybody does show up to the building, faculty and staff, that all their needs have been met. So over the last several weeks, we've met with end-user groups and key stakeholders. So over the, the last several weeks, we, we've met with, um, end user groups and key stakeholders and sat down with them and reviewed, you know, high level topics such as curriculum, operations, IT administration. Uh, these were two to three hour sessions that the faculty and staff took time out of their busy days to sit down with us. Uh, pretty much old school, some printed drawings out on a table, a red pen. And we went through every inch of the building to make sure that we get it right. You know, what do they have today? What does this school look like today? And what do they want it to look like tomorrow? We, we really want to get it right. So I just want to give a special thank you to Daniel Arison, Tiffany Orin, Vanessa Scott, Michael Nolan, Jenny Lee, Heather Hogan, Bonnie Kinsler, Bill Doherty, Ron Harris, and of course, Dr. Malash. We really appreciate your feedback. You guys were super engaged. Everyone's super excited about this project and we just, we just are very excited about getting this thing rolling. So what Phil mentioned earlier, um, you may have noticed some people onsite, some orange vests out in the, the fields are where the new school is going to be. Uh, so we're just going to talk a little bit about that. So we started out, uh, a few weeks back to do our geotechnical studies. Uh, we took some borings, which are basically samples of the sublayers of the earth. Uh, we took twenty-four in total. So as you can see in this visual right here, every red dot represents a bore hole. So you can see that we were all around in those woods back there. Uh, the bore holes are, are critical for the design of the foundations and structure of the building. Um, preliminary feedback came back as, as early as this morning that everything is coming back as planned and there are no issues whatsoever with, with the ground itself. Next slide, please. Uh, we're also out there and we wrapped up percolation and infiltration testing. So basically digging big holes, filling up with water and seeing how long it takes for the water to drain. And you take that information and we utilize that to design the storm systems. Next slide, please. Uh, existing sewer structures. So we need, do need to tap into existing sewer structures throughout the street and, um, and throughout the property. So we want to make sure that they are as the asphalt that we got, right? If they are as deep as they are and also surveying the existing lines to make sure they're in good shape. So we actually ran video cameras through those lines and surveyed them to make sure that the ones that we are going to tap into are, are, are in good shape, right? We don't want to bring new pipes into an existing sewer structure and then it fails at that point afterwards. So, um, in addition to that, um, we're still doing, um, the expanded traffic studies. So when we met with the township, they had requested three additional intersections to be included in the traffic study, which are those three intersections that are listed up there. In addition to those three additional studies, they asked us to perform three different case studies. Uh, one has to do with the recently opened apartments and then some unoccupied retail space at the Promenade and Granite Run. Uh, they're also asked us to, um, take the peak hour factor of when the school will be in session. And what does that look like to the existing traffic flow that's outside the building? And lastly, in addition to that, so those three additional intersections that they asked us to survey, they asked us to provide the crash data over the last three years at those intersections. Uh, so like I said, that's not yet done, but we should be wrapping that up in the next couple of weeks.
So yeah, all of, I'm sorry, almost forgot. Yeah, all of that feeds into the land development process. So, you know, you have to do all of this investigation to even be prepared to submit an application. Uh, just a reminder, the application has multiple different layers of approval. You know, it's not just the township, but it's Delaware County, it's the Department of Environmental Protection, it's PennDOT. So there's a lot of people who look at this and make sure that, uh, things are getting designed correctly. We're mitigating any issues and all of those kinds of things. So where we're at right now, since we have this expanded traffic study, we have to complete that first. So that has to come in first because then that helps feed everything else. It's kind of a domino effect. So when that's done, then we can submit the preliminary land development. Then, uh, the township will give us essentially a hearing to, to talk about all of this. That's going to come in the near future after those other things are done. Then we can do the NPDES permit. This is all the stormwater and all of that. Uh, all of this is in a domino. You need all the permits, obviously, before you begin construction. And this is the piece that really drives the construction of the building. Uh, just real quick on budget. So we had the schematic design package. You had seen all of that. Um, it was trending a little higher than we would like and that, that's typical in schematic design. So, you know, there's been some design changes and, and simple things, simple options that we're putting together in the design development stage, which is the next stage, which will help bring that in. This is typical and this is just how it works. There's a push pull with wants versus needs and, you know, prioritizing things.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand, right? Um, so we're going up, but it should come back down because we're very much in the planning stage. So kind of like when you're first looking at a new house, whatever you add, you take away and you're, you're just thinking at this.
Yeah, refining budget because at first you're just boxes, right? And then you start putting all the detail in it and then you start refining that and making sure that you're on budget as you fill in the detail. We're in the fill in the detail stage. So, so yeah, this is, when I say this is just part of the process, this is typically how it works. Um, just some next steps. I mean, obviously we, we complete the, when we complete the expanded traffic study, that will start a lot of the land development process. Um, you know, we're, we're doing estimates now for design development, make sure we're back on budget. Uh, there's a little bit of geotechnical investigation that's still to be done, more for the geothermal system, not just the structural. And we are still on track for an act thirty-four hearing in January. So there'll be advertising, advertising that in December and then having that in January. With that, that's, that's what we've been doing the last month. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
That I was remiss in saying last month when Jennifer was here, when she was talking about the plan. Um, I think because you guys are in it and we haven't talked about like schematic design, uh, as like a big community level. There were a lot of really cool things they're doing in there that talk about like the values of the district, like how the media center is the center. And I think it would be cool if she could make a video or something that we could promote and start getting the community a little bit more involved in the design of the building and how it is promoting sort of our values as a district and what we want for our students.
That's great feedback. I'll certainly bring that through to the Schrader team. Yeah, that, that shouldn't be a problem. Yeah.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Great to see it, um, and, and the plan. It's after the board talks. Yes. Um, so, uh, yeah, so, uh, what I was interested in hearing is a little bit more about those holes. I know I was out by the baseball field today. Um, I saw on the main baseball field, there's a tarp over a big hole area. There was a lot of stuff on the main field. So that was in addition to what we saw on the screen there.
The infiltration percolation.
Yeah. That was the infiltration percolation testing. So those are large, larger holes. Right. And okay. So those were the ones that were out on the main athletic fields right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And how many of those were there?
There were, there was twelve of those, I believe, um, you know.
Yeah. Cause I saw the, our grounds people have done a lot of work trying to fill them in now and trying to plant. They've got all the hoses out and there, so, uh, yeah, so it's, everybody seems to be accommodating, but yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other question I had was about the traffic. So the township has requested additional intersections and to take into account Granite Run and the apartments that are building. Now, I'm a little confused about that because shouldn't Granite Run and the apartments do a traffic study? Shouldn't there be a traffic study that could feed into our traffic site?
Yeah, that, that is unfortunate. Um, as you are the one building, you know, that's, uh, unfortunately that gets pushed to you.
But they built first.
Right. And they would have had to do a traffic study as well.
So does that mean there's an existing traffic study?
Yeah, but you have to do it with all new conditions.
No, I understand that, but could, is there information on that that might be helpful to us in our study?
It, it could be. Um, however, they're going to want it current for exactly what we're doing now.
Yeah, but I think what Ken is asking isn't so much, he recognized, correct me if I'm wrong, he recognizes that we have to do it. I think what he is wondering is, is there information while we wait for the finalization of our traffic study? Is there information we can glean so that we can better plan and think and anticipate, adjust in the interim? Is, is that what you're saying, Ken?
Yeah, in the interim and, you know, in consultation with the people who are doing our traffic study. As things move forward, let's see what people planned and understand because if, if, if traffic turns out to be an issue, which, you know, undoubtedly there's traffic there.
Yes.
Um, then I think it's going to take the whole village to solve that. And I, I want to make sure that we're engaging all the parties that have helped create the traffic.
Agreed.
And working on the solution and also to volunteer. You know, I would like to see the school district, you know, make sure that we solve the problem, not only for us and dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but we actually improve the traffic situation in an area that's already challenged.
Yeah, absolutely. So that, that's one. Thank you for the feedback. Absolutely. We'll bring that to the traffic engineer. They do work with other traffic engineers and the existing studies. There is a bigger piece with PennDOT, you know, uh, looking to modify a lot of this area. So we've got to work with that as well. Um, we will certainly take that into account, what they have submitted to township, because that's all public record. Um, so certainly, certainly good.
Because, and I know PennDOT is hard to work with and their response time is slower and slower every minute. Um, but, but, but there, we have allies. I mean, we have potential allies all over the place at all kinds of levels in government and, you know, and in the community. And if we want to solve this problem, you know, as a group, we might be able to make a difference. I want to make sure we don't act in a silo around this.
Hundred percent. And we, we are, we are planning a meeting very similar to that where we bring all the parties together to make sure that the, the problem is solved for the long term. So that's, that's certainly part of the plan. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it is unfortunate that PennDOT didn't complete that project that they'd planned in the twenties and now it's now pushing off to the mid twenties, thirties. But, um, we have to deal with. On, on the Penncrest side because that's a lot of traffic coming in and out. When I look at the part, when I look at the schematic of the site design, if you can pull it up, there's a small part, a smaller parking lot in the front and a larger parking lot in the back. Is one of them for teachers and one of them for the public? And so will teachers also be entering from the Penncrest side? I know Penncrest and this school will not start at the same time, so we are pretty good on that. That, that by creating the entrance on the Penncrest side, the teachers and the buses will all flow through Penncrest and Baron Road, not Rose Tree Road, leaving Rose Tree Road only with visitors and, uh,
Parent circulation.
Parents. So, um, is that the case that that's where all the teachers are going to go? I guess is my key question. So they will be coming in the back. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, and the key design is to separate.
Of Rose Tree Road.
Absolutely. You're always trying to separate bus traffic, teacher traffic and parent drop off traffic, which has become a large portion of it.
I know people do that with new schools, but our, most of our schools predate my birth. So, um, that was not a, you know, that was not something that was planned for back in the fifties and sixties or even in the nineteen hundreds, so to speak, when media elementary was, was built. So, um, it's our first opportunity to try to separate the traffic.
Absolutely.
All right. Do we have anything else from the board? Right. Uh, something from the, the community? There is a question about how much property would be left after PennDOT, uh, takes away a parcel. It was a question asked previously.
So I do not have the acreage with me right now. Um, I do not have the acreage with me right now. I mean, I can just show you what they take. It's this little segment right here.
Yeah, you look for visually, you're an actual quantity of, of like acreage.
Acres, I wonder how much parcel or two.
Yeah, it's, it's like two acres, but I'll, I'll have to give it, I'll have to give you an exact number. Yeah.
Like in the previous meeting, you stated the financial impact we have on homeowners rebuilding this site. I believe at about two hundred and forty-five dollars more a year for a medium homeowner.
There was a question about the financial impact, two hundred, it was estimated to be two hundred and forty-five dollars, you're asking per year? Okay. And you're asking whether that is still the case? Okay. Okay. You're asking for some specific information we saw on the slides. So we want to make sure we're accurate about what that, the costs were. I don't remember, does any board member remember the slide or we have access to it?
It should be on, in, on the website of all of our past presentations. If, if I recall, it was the median home price of whatever the median home price is in the very true media is full district, four hundred some odd thousand.
But that's also not how this building is being funded, right?
Right. They, they said the impact would be approximately forty-five dollars, I think, not two hundred and forty-five.
Right. But this is not an additional tax to taxpayers in the community. It is part of our budget. So it's not like everyone is going to get a tax bill to pay for this. It is going to be wrapped into how we operate the budget into part, whole operating budget annually. Did I say that right?
But it seems like the slides, uh, for that presentation are, all of that is online. So you could see the, uh, exact numbers. And I see we have something else from a community member. I'm, I'm sorry.
I believe it would have been, I, I think, I believe it would have been whenever we discussed the, the budget because it was of what if we raised X percent, the average impact per, you know, if you have a home that's five hundred thousand dollars assessed or more, it was going to be approximately X amount of dollars per year. And then I, I, I believe the, the median was, um, less than a hundred dollars per year was my recollection per year in increase in taxes. But again, I don't have the slide in front of me, so please don't quote me on that figure.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, you, we have something else from the community?
I'm about to find, but out the news of the K through one learning center. At the Milltown Planning, we had on September third, Dr. Malo, you mentioned that the K through one would also be used for pre and after care. What are the cost, what are the operational costs?
There's a question about, uh, Dr. Malash and his discussion of the, the use of the K to one center outside of the K to one students, pre and after care?
It's a, it's a contracted service. That's not something the district does not provide that with our staff. We have an outside service, a third party that comes in, families contract with that service. They pay them directly in order to provide the care. We don't pay for that. Leading Edge, thank you.
And, and we're currently providing it, right?
We do not. No, we do not. Leading Edge exists at all four of our current elementary schools. I would assume that that would be the one, we'd have to go through a process to do that, but we would have an outside service. We have, there is no plan on our part to operate our own before and after care. But that's a, that's purely contracted between the family and the outside service. Sure. No, good question.
All right. We have something else from the community and just, you know, okay, concise too. Um, it's that, we have someone asking, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's like, I'm trying to relay your question. So now I have no idea what you said.
So look for the costs. Again, we're going to have to go back through the, the presentations, Mr. Rissar, because I want to make sure that what Ms. Wolf is asking, that we are talking about the same things. It can get messy if we're talking about different hypotheticals and imagining different things. Um, all the things, and, and this goes back to what Ms. Guusik said, uh, it'll all come out of the operational budget. Just as we look at, and I'm going to talk about our hiring for this year, right? The new staff that we hired, the new people that came in, part of the operational budget. Uh, if we add an additional educational assistant, there's not an additional tax that goes to the taxpayers. If we, you know, bring in another teacher this year, same thing. It's part of what we do in terms of our yearly operational budget that's there. Um, and no, we do not have a dollar amount about what that looks like. There's an economy of scale that exists. When Mr. Nolan and his team, you know, what's it look like when folks are cutting the grass? Does that mean that they're hiring an additional person or getting an additional lawnmower? Not necessarily that's there. So there's some things that we will have to back into, but there, that does not exist as we sit here today.
Let me recognize another, uh, community member. It's a question about the traffic study and whether it started yet and the answer is yes.
So the first part of that was to monitor all the roads that are immediately adjacent to the building. And what the township asked is to also study the roads that, uh, feed into the adjacent roads. So to expand it a little bit wider. Yeah, they, they come out and they'll do traffic counts. Uh, they could do it at different times. Um, but yeah. But yeah, they've, they've been out to do the initial roads. And now they're going to come out and do the additional roads.
So there's a question, I'm sorry, um, there's a question about whether monitors have been out to do the roads and they come at different times? Is that correct?
They do both. Sometimes they use technology, sometimes there's a physical person. That's up to the traffic engineers. They, they, they run their own protocol, which is sufficient for traffic planning.
We have something else from the community. Go ahead. Question about how will the Pennsylvania require, was it Act 34? How will it be advertised in December?
We'll go through our traditional, the same way that we advertise all of our meetings. I'm sure Mrs. Wilson will push it out through our social media, beyond the website. It'll be listed as a meeting uh, through the board page as well. Question about whether there'll be any direct correspondence with taxpayers. Will we mail a post, we have not talked about mailing postcards out to everyone? Certainly can have that discussion, but that has not been discussed at this point.
All right, we have something else. Let me get uh, you the first one. Okay, there's a question about whether we're looking at the intersection of Ridley Creek Road and Rose Tree Road. Okay.
Just show the additional ones.
So the roads that are studied are dictated by the township and by PennDOT. So you do the immediate roads, and then if there is additional concern or otherwise, they will, they will tell you what additional um, intersections to study. So this is what has been directed to be studied at this point.
Well, it sounds like that Middletown Township dictates it, so you should probably email them. Well, I'm just telling you that they're the ones that can look into that. It, it makes sense for you to email them. But let's, we have someone else who has a question? There's a question about updates that have been or will be made to the other schools.
I think I know what she's talking about.
Ms. Janzig, I'm not sure what you're looking at. I'm not sure how to answer. I don't, I don't know what you're looking at.
I think that was the Edgemont.
Yeah, I think this is when we had um, one brand new elementary school that was going to be built for K through five. And there were going to be certain elements to each school that we were going to have to do to bring parity to those schools. Because we couldn't build a K through five where all the students in one building had a lot of different services or facilities that others didn't. One of the key ones was going to be air conditioning, which has already been remedied. But the current uh, elementary schools are pretty much a parody now. So a lot of what needed to be done has already been done. But uh, that was for the Edgemont School and didn't have anything to do with this uh, current K one center.
All right, also this has been part of our conversation about the debt service. When we were looking at those different tranches of money, we've been planning for this and it's still part of our conversation. But that is debt service and not part of our operational budget. It's going to hit us all at once.
Also, that debt service meeting was May, when Raymond James came in for the debt service. I don't know if the presentation has been posted online or not, but if we can post that presentation, if it's not there, that'd be good.
All right, I think we had something else. Go ahead. Question about the name of the company doing the traffic study.
It's three, it's T P D. T like Tom, P like Peter, D like David, T P D.
All right, um, we have another question. Why are you looking it up? Go ahead. Okay, so there's a question about the perk test and why do you do it?
It's for stormwater management. To, to identify how quickly the stormwater drains into the existing soils. So in, in case we need to supplement, because i- if it doesn't drain quick enough, then we un, need to implement underground infiltration systems. Right, right.
All right, do we have any, any other questions or comments?
There's, there's systems that they're designed about that.
Wait, I'm sorry. Say that again? How close would the pipeline be to the K to one center?
I'd have to get back to you. I mean, I have a pipeline map, so we can, we can, we can measure.
Okay, so there's a question about just trying to find out where it is, the pipeline is. Okay. All right, uh, we have something else? Okay, well, you know what? He'll provide that for you, but we, we have another question? There's a question about the land and the, the purchase of the land.
Be like, so I think we've answered this before and I can only speak for myself about why I voted to approve the purchase. But that was because land, as we know, is at a commodity here, does not come up very often, and it was directly related to the high school. And it seemed like a good idea at the time, and that has panned out. That's why I voted to approve it.
All right, all right.
Also, we have, we have answered this at other meetings.
To move on now. We're going to move on now unless there is another question. All right, thank you. Okay, there's a question about the, the range, how much it would cost to build the K to one center?
Yeah, there, one, we're not going to add additional costs. We're just talking about how you estimate while you're budgeting. So this is just like you were, if you were building a house, you would know, you would need to stay within your budget. So it's just part of that process. So it's still within the old, the overall budget. So 84 million was the uh, construction budget, and then there is the athletics as well. That's all the same. So part of our job is to make sure that it is within that budget.
So this is going back, I think, to the question I asked you earlier. Well, because you said it goes up, it goes down, it's part of the process. And I just want to make crystal clear, when we're saying it's part of the process, it is, okay, let's see if we add this, how would that do? Oh, no, that goes above, let's take that away. Okay, what if we switch it this way? How does that do? Does that go above? Does it go? But we are staying well with it, within that budget. We are just now looking and comparing and like you do when you're planning something out. Okay.
Yeah, that's how the budgeting goes. So you go from schematic design, which is just boxes, to detailed design, which starts adding the detail, then to construction documents. So there's, through this whole process, you're managing the budget. That was the, that was the, the, the reason I put that up there.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation and all the information. All right, we are going to move to another presentation um, about the new website. Barbara Wilson, the coordinator of communications and grant writing, will be telling us about the new website. And just an aside, Barbara has been doing a great job in providing information to the district about what's going on. If people paid attention to social media or some of the updates um, that you get through email. There was a lot of information about projects that were going on, the swimming pool, um, what else? The HVAC, oh, you had air conditioning, all of that stuff. The update about Springton Lake Middle School and the uh, addition to the cafeteria. I particularly liked the video about our uh, kindergarteners, the class of 2036, and their adventures uh, on the football field. So thank you very much.
And while we're waiting for Barbara, just as a plug in for anyone listening, any resident can sign up for our listserv to get any information. This is meant for everyone here, they're taxpayers. Everybody has a right to know what is going on and to hear all the wonderful things going on in our district. So anybody can go on our website and sign up and then get the emails, the updates, um, so they can reach out and be informed.
Thank you for that. All right, well, we're, we're setting up another couple of seconds, maybe the Phillies game, anything, anything, Phillies game?
Still zero, zero.
What inning is it, please?
We are at the end of the fifth.
I can, I can just start talking if you, if you like. And we'll, we'll get the screen up momentarily. So I'm just going to do a, a pretty quick overview of our new website um, that launched this summer. Our provider for the website is Final Site. That's the company that bought Blackboard. That was our previous provider. We are pleased with the streamlined, simplified design Final Site has worked to um, create with us. In making decisions for the new website, we kept several items at top of mind. First of all, 60% of our website users check the website from their phones exclusively. Phones are the most used devices for information in general by all stakeholders. Content on the website must be concise to appeal to the user. Endless scrolling is an annoyance at best and a deterrent at worst. The most sought information, um, which for us is food services, calendar and district news, must be placed at several locations on the homepage. Quick links must be clear and easily accessible. We incorporated suggestions from the 2023 communication audit completed by the Donovan Group, keeping in mind that in the past two years, some best practices have evolved. And a less is more approach to the district and school website homepages is the standard now. So among the suggestions we have implemented on this new page are having a single quick link section, which you can see up there on the screen, rather than splitting them into two parts, which was how the previous website was designed. Maintaining an easy to navigate calendar. Calendar is incredibly popular with our stakeholders. It can be found at several points on the homepage. There is a, a year, a glance calendar for this year and next year. That just gives people an overview of when the district is open and closed, when certain meetings are. You can also go on, um, you can see the links up there to our school calendars. You can go to the district calendar. There is a way to format, sort of customize the calendar. If you have a child at the high school and in one of the elementary schools and you also want the overall district calendar, you can get the whole gamut there on the screen. You can get only just, you know, what you in particular want. We also uh, implemented, or I should say maintained, the easy to navigate upcoming events section. Didn't do much um, to change that. It's, it's a little more modern, but you know, gives you a, a good sort of um, sketch of what's happening and then you can always click to read more. Also, uh, the, the audit suggested that we include a photo thumbnail next to each news headline in our district news section. It draws people in, it makes them more likely to click on it. So we've been doing that, and their other suggestion was be sure to keep the news items current. So we will, we will be doing that. Um, they are current right now. And um, you know, just, just keeping it visually interesting without too much on there, especially when people are looking um, from their phones. Our content on the website is very intentional. When you see the slideshow at the top half of the page, we, we are very cognizant of featuring students from all grade levels, reflecting the positive energy, diversity, innovation and excellence of the school district. And the slideshow also is updated at least monthly. I also wanted to note that the school websites, their layout and content are consistent with the district website. So no matter what you're looking at or you're trying to find, obviously it's not going to be identical. The, the informational pieces are, are slightly different, but you're still going to find the calendar button in roughly the same place. You know, your, your news items are roughly in the same place. So it's, it's easy when you're moving with your children up through the different schools. We do have a communication coordinator at each school. So they um, are very good about keeping their slideshows updated. They can, you know, get pictures and, and post them, post events as they happen. So we are, we are doing our level best to keep things updated and interesting and user friendly. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you so much as a parent who has been busy and you're like, oh my gosh, the kid is sick, I have to do an absence. And I can't find what I need or I can't find what I'm looking for. It's just absolutely maddening. And this is, you know, it's 2025. This is a really important tool for residents to be able to communicate and know what's happening and to handle things. So thank you for making it easier for people to not only get the information they need, but also to communicate as necessary about the things they really need. And to hear, since it's, it's a, it's such a huge improvement compared to, oh gosh, compared to when I started. Thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you.
I agree. I feel like this is an ever evolving problem that we're trying to solve. But I do want to say, I had to search for a form last week. I had to go outside and use Google to search for it. Our search function could not find it. It was the.
Do you remember what form it was?
Visit form. And like, so me, and this was a problem before in an old design, the search, our own search function was terrible.
Okay, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at that. Okay.
That said, I did have to search new school on it tonight, right here in the meeting, so I could pull up some of the, the information for people who had questions. And it did go right to that.
Good.
So that was good.
Yeah, I, I, I will note too, just to your point, this is, you know, I, I always say the district website is sort of a living entity. So you know, it, it's new and it's done, it's not really done. You know, we're, we're constantly looking at it, we're, we're monitoring it, we're improving it. And keeping track of how people want to use it and what best practices are, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? We have something from the community. Go ahead. Okay, there's just a, um, a focus on the, the search function and how it needs to improve.
Okay, we, we have duly noted. And I also um, did, I, I was pointing to Kim earlier. I wanted to um, thank Kim McCann. She um, when I came on just a little over a year ago, has, has helped me tremendously. She's been in this whole process from the time um, the decision was made to revamp the website. So um, just wanted to give her thanks for all of her work as well.
We have something else from community member?
Oh.
Well, wait, um, well, let me get, I already recognized him, so I'll get back to you. Go ahead. All right, and there's a comment that the, the calendar is much improved and easy uh, to maneuver. Especially if you have, you know, maybe multiple children in the district. All right, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, my slow thumbs. I was like, oh, come on. So the one thing, and, and maybe it's me, uh, like I said, so much better and I keep all my praise. But I do, I still do find it a challenge if you're trying to just get a quick look at a school and see, okay, I know who the principal is, but who's the guidance counselor? How do I reach this person? Whenever I go to like faculty directory, it's like, it feels like the Wild West, trying to figure this out. And it would just be so nice just to have like, here's a, meet the team or something like that for each individual school. So just food for thought. Those are the key people you try to reach and sometimes the guidance counselor you really need to reach.
Like you have to know their name.
Yes, no, you, you are exactly pinpointing what we've been working on diligently. It's, it's a big part of this project, but it is, it is in process to improve that staff directory tremendously. So, yes, yes.
All right. I think we're good, we're good.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that you've done. It's great. Moving on to education and wellness, I think my screen. Mr. Dougherty will present the plan for the Access and Opportunity Committee.
Hello again. So, this isn't really a presentation as much of an update. My microphone off. I just wanted to make the board aware that we are working on developing a comprehensive spreadsheet to take a full look at all the activities that we do at the high school and middle school, extracurricular, co-curricular, and our clubs, and looking at what the district funds, what costs are to families, as well as what, how booster clubs support these things. So, I wanted you to know that we have a team of people working on this, and then you can look for an update in January. I want, I didn't want you to think I forgot about it.
I have a quick question, Bill.
But we are working on that, yes.
That sounds great, thank you. Does it include field trips?
We can, yeah. It did, it includes travel, is definitely part of it. So, these were really extracurricular things, but field trips are actually would be considered part of the curriculum. However, if a sport team was taking a trip somewhere, or the band, if there was a trip for the band, that would be considered one of the things that we're looking at for sure.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. We're good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dougherty. All right, so we, next up, we have Ms. Considine, who will present the 2025 state assessment results.
All right. Hello, everyone. So, we have our PSSA results and our Keystone results for the 24-25 school year. And I have a bug here, so I apologize as it flies into me. I'm just going to go through. Can each graph kind of take a look where we were last year? And then we're going to look at kind of trends and, and our growth. So, our ELA. There's our math. Our Keystone results. I will make this a little smaller. We can fit it in. And here we have our comparison from 2021 through 2025. So, I'll give you just a second to take a look at that for both ELA and math at the elementary level. Here's our middle school. And our Keystone, which is interesting, right? Okay. And so, just notable, we have maintained proficiency around the 80th percentile. It's been very consistent from the 21 through the 2025 year. As you know, we have started, we've adopted a new ELA program, K8, this year. We are also, our math PSSA proficiency continues to increase each year, and we're excited about that growth. We are actually in the fifth year of Eureka. So, it's going to be a nice time to really dig deep into that data, in particular, our growth data, and we'll be back in February to focus on that, on that growth. Our Keystone proficiency, that really had the most impact from the COVID year, as we kind of saw in that, in that graph. We had a lot of families opting out of, of that assessment, so.
And, and I'm just sorry, but it's been a while. Can you just, just a quick reminder, like what happened? Explain why they opt out and we had went right down? Because I think it is startling whenever you see that.
It is startling. So, at that time, when we came back into the fall of 2020 to 2021, well, we didn't have the, the standard test that we came into. So, they were, they were optional. So, we had a lot of people opt out of taking them. And there were a lot of our kiddos who had already taken or were looking into things like SATs and all of those tests. So, adding on another test was not something they were interested in doing. So, we had some of our, most of our high school students, just, it really dropped that year. Whereas our elementaries, we had more students participating in the assessment. You can see our Keystone Literature and Bio stayed around the same, the proficiency between 80 and 85%. Our Algebra I has been consistent, about 25% higher than our state average. So, our growth, our PVAS. So, if you're kind of looking at the blue, this is, if you're thinking about what is predicted for our students to grow, and that is kind of the difference between what the state says they should grow and what they actually do grow. So, we are well above what is predicted for us. And then we're meeting that predictive measure in eighth grade for math. So, we've seen quite a bit of growth, which is nice. This is based on the last three years.
Krista, do we have any idea what's going on with the eighth grade? Just because it's the one data point that sticks out on three different slides. Do we have any, I mean, I, I was kind of going back in my head. They were in fourth grade during the pandemic, when the pandemic started.
Now, and it's, if you go back, it's always been an outlier since the assessment changed. I would love for us as adults to have to take that test. It's, it's very challenging. And when we look at our growth measure, so we take a benchmark growth three times a year, and then we use that measure to predict how well they will do on the PSSA. And then as educators, we can respond, right? So, we see how they do on the growth measure. We dig into the areas that that growth measure is showing us that they may be, need extra help or be deficient in certain skills. And then we can really focus on those skills so that they can be kind of filling in those gaps. And that also will tell us they are projected to get this on your PSSA, to be advanced, to be proficient. To be proficient on the eighth grade test, you have to score in the 90th plus percentile of our growth measures. I mean, it just has, it is a very challenging year for that, for that eighth grade assessment.
How does it compare to last year's eighth grade cohort? Do you know?
I do not know that.
I was just curious, because I just don't, and I wasn't here last year, but the years before. I just don't remember there being such a big difference.
We can look at the cohorts. I can pull the cohorts for you.
Looked over time and how it compares to previous cohorts.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, that eighth grade trend though, just to reiterate, that is consistent across the state.
I always hate looking at this data without looking at all the other districts, because then when you throw the other district's data on, we either look just the same as everyone else or better. So, I, I, we get that next month, is that correct? We get all the other districts?
Do, do we, I mean, is there anything curricular? I mean, I know math, kid, kids taking math sort of differentiate from each other in eighth grade, and so the people are taking different things.
That is one of the things historically as well that would happen is, is that in eighth grade, sorry, wow. Hope you all enjoyed, you enjoyed that. That's how excited I am about eighth grade math. But in eighth grade, right, we have a lot of students that take algebra. So, the students are required to take the Keystone Algebra test in eighth grade, as well as the eighth grade PSSA. Our eighth grade students that take the Algebra Keystone do extremely well, extremely well. So, again, it-
We still have a high percentage of people who are opting out of the PSSA?
I'd have to look at that. It's not as high as it had been, but I can't give you a number on that. But anyway, but to answer your, your question, Mr. Dennis, it's, um, yes, we have looked at curriculum, and we've aligned curriculum and adjusted curriculum and tried to balance the, especially the students that were taking algebra, they're taking algebra in eighth grade, and making sure they are getting exposed to the eighth grade standards for the PSSA test, so that they have an opportunity to do well on, on both. But it is, but that's a challenge is, is squeezing both of those standards and skills.
And, and the difference, which is interesting, so our students in eighth grade will take both, but their Keystone results won't show until their 11th grade year, even though they took that Algebra test in eighth grade, because it doesn't get reported until that year. So, the Keystone's very, it's a very different, we know, right? We can pull it, but it doesn't get reported out until that whole cohort hits their 11th grade year by the state. Just a, yes.
Go back a couple of slides to middle school math, PSSA 2021 to 2025. You're right, it's eighth grade every single year. It's not a particular eighth grade, it's not a particular cohort of kids going through the system. It's eighth grade every year. Bill, it would be interesting to know if more eighth grade students opt out of PSSA. If they're taking Algebra, I can see that family saying.
Yeah, I don't remember that being a trend. In fact, I almost assumed that that would happen as well when I started in this role. I never saw that as something that stood out to me, but I think it would be interesting to take a look.
And take a look. And so, for just for the, our ELA, our growth, we continue to be well above what is predictive or projected for our students. Keystone's as well. And in the literature, we are meeting our growth measure. Any questions?
Is there anything else from the board? Good, okay, we have something from the community. And again, I have to repeat your question or comment. Okay, there's a, it's a question about math and the, I guess, the changing math curriculum.
Right, so there's, there's absolutely differentiation going on with this program. Our, and as you can see, our, our data has improved since moving to this math program. But the focus really has been on how we differentiate those standards. So, while there might be direct instruction to begin a lesson, then students are going into stations, whether that's an enrichment station, whether that's another dose of the lesson with the teacher, or whether that's review and practice. So, there is, that's the expectation of the math class. K through five.
Okay, can I, can I get your question or just some of the comment? Okay, all right. So, there's a, a comment about believing that there might be more room to differentiate in the math curriculum.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
All right, looks like we're good. We'll, are you, I'm sorry, you're not finished? Are you finished it? Okay, all right. Thank you for your presentation. And I, I know we have a couple other things under education and wellness.
In light of Bill's comment about the, the equity and everything with the programming and the activities, if you open up L, item L, which is the Penn Crest Non-Athletic Supplementals. Yeah.
Maybe, can we maybe wait until we get there?
Sorry, I thought we were there.
No, we're still education and wellness.
Never mind.
So, oh, we have a, a, something from the community, yep. So, there's a question about the Student Activity Fund and who funds it?
So, those are monies that are collected by students for any particular group. And then it runs through our school district through that particular line item, then designated for student activities.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have my letter. It's E, not, not L, it's E.
Not, well, we, E on what? Education wellness, okay.
Yes. So, in this, in your assessment, Bill, can we please make sure we determine whose travel costs we pay for and whose travel costs we don't pay for? Because right now, it says that the, the district is going to cover the travel costs for the Envirathon team, but we don't travel, cover the travel costs for other academic teams.
Absolutely.
So, we need to make sure that we are getting to an equitable situation for all of our teams.
That is absolutely what we're looking at.
But, yeah, that's sort of interesting. They're going to Mississippi State and the cost is $1,200. So, we're not paying for, I guess, when, when we get the list, maybe what we're exactly paying for might be important, right? Because if they're going to Mississippi, it only costs $1,200.
It is, this is why, um, right. So, this is why, this is a big undertaking, collecting this information, because there's a lot of narrative and nuance behind each particular trip and situation. So, we're going to do our best to not just deliver numbers, but be able to deliver something in a way that provides some background.
So, yeah, I was thinking about asking this earlier, was what, it's taking time to do this? And it, and the, the causes are multiple, I would assume, but part of it is that the information is scattered all over the place.
Right, so.
And are you going to have a way to be able to recreate this regularly? So, we can do this again without it being so much of a pain?
Yeah, I think you make a good point. I, I was actually thinking of that the other day as we were starting to put this together. And I think that once we have the template and go through it this first time, I think it would be easier than, you know, to plug in the numbers. And once everyone knows what we are asking for and looking for, then they should, everyone else should get used to, you know, filling out that information and, and pulling it in a certain way to make it usable for us. I would anticipate, I do anticipate that when we do present and do get to this in January, and it, it'll not only be a long discussion, but I don't expect the board to say to me, you got it perfect. Right, I'm not expecting that at all. So, I know that there's going to be some feedback. I'm sure there's going to be something that we miss, right? But I think it's going to be a process of, you know, developing and getting this information in a way that makes sense to all of us. But it will definitely be a process.
Bill, your positivity, by the way, Bill, some feedback will be coming, yes.
Add on what Mr. Dougherty was talking about, it, part of this is the evolution of our practice, right? How do we do, what do we do, right? There are things that we do because that's how we've done them and that's how they have existed. So, it really is the evolution of the practice. And, and that, you know, there are things that Bill has already identified as he is leading this broad group of folks. are things that Bill has already identified as he is leading this broad group of folks, you know, who are gathering information, you know, to suggest, to question, to ask, but it will change how our standard operating procedures look and how is it that we function as a school district, because there's, there are things that we want to know, you want to know, we should be able to provide. It's all there, it just is, it, it's like scooping it up out of a pot right now, and we need to have it segmented, you know, in different spots, so it's the evolution of that, uh, but yeah, it's a, it's a heavy lift, uh, that Bill's got going, he's got a, a very broad team, uh, of people, lots of different job titles and lots of different responsibilities, there's, and then the two factors that I think he'll go through when we talk about it in January, here's the data that we have, the why behind it is going to be that broader piece, and the where are we going, um, is going to be the, the heavy lift as we discuss it as the board.
I just want to give a little different comment and then you will have a much more pertinent thing, but Phillies are up ahead by one and it's in the seventh inning, so we'll see.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because Kelly had asked you earlier if this would all include field trips, and obviously this is, I guess, a field trip, right? But for example, um, there was like the question about the student activities fund, it would be helpful to see, um, we talked about parity, we've had a lot of discussions too, like about the cost of field trips to families, um, is it the same amongst like the elementary schools, like I know, for example, like at Glenwood, a lot of the, the PTG fundraising then goes in, I believe, to like paying for field trips, whereas at Indian Lane, the parents are paying for it, so, you know, maybe, uh, there are often offerings made, right, to families who maybe cannot afford a certain thing, but maybe they're not comfortable asking, so I think, um, keeping that in mind, um, you know, as a parent of a sixth grader, sixth grade parents, we were asked out like quite a bit of money at the beginning of the school year, um, and it can be overwhelming, and I think it would be really helpful to have a, um, like line item sort of, um, showing the individual contributions per student from the family.
Absolutely, yeah, that is part of the, what we've collected already, and we are also collecting information on, um, when we do ask parents to, if, if it's a hardship, how many people are responding to that, right, saying that yes, it is. I know that we'll never have all of them, right? Like some people will not accept our help, right, with, with finances, but, um, we certainly offer it and some people do take advantage of that.
Some people get too overwhelmed to even ask, I, I'm just throwing it out there, that it can be real.
I, I completely agree, and I think it's on our part to make sure that we're constantly, um, extending that invitation, right, and extending ourselves to let them know that we're, we are here to help and support.
I, I think it's important to, to note that the, the principals, the people in our schools know families, and, um, they are there to ask those questions or make sure in many ways, I think that's very important, I think that, that's an important aspect of our district, that they know families and they, they recognize those issues about people who may be like, "No, I don't need your help," or people who, um, need it, so I, I think we need to recognize that, that, that is known, um, throughout our school.
Absolutely, I just am concerned that if you get a permission slip sent home and you're asking for $50 for a field trip, that someone might be embarrassed to ask for help, I just think that there is, and even if the, the guidance counselor, the principal, the teacher is aware that this family may need the help, it would maybe be better off that we're not asking for the $50 from a family, I just think there are certain thresholds in my brain that seem like a big ask and that's all.
It's, and, and again, I appreciate you all bringing it up because it's part of the discussions that we'll go through, some of it will appear parallel, um, field trips at the elementary level, because as Bill talked about, they are curricular, we would not build those on the same chart as the one that we are doing right now, but we will look at what is it that we can build that runs parallel to that because there are different pieces, um, the costs and, and some of it again is about the perspective, if we can put stuff out forward so that people are aware of it and it's clear on the district side from the school and the district overall, what does that look like, I think people have a better understanding, including staff members, listen, I, I have four daughters, right, there was a time that three of them were in middle school at the same time or three of them in high school at the same time, there's a lot, when it all comes due at the same, that, that's a lot, when, you know, to reach into your pocket to try to pull through, um, folks don't always realize that, right, about what that is and, and why, um, so part of ours is to be able to put it out there and say this is what we know, you know, and if we can know better, then we can do better.
So Bill, I, I want to say a huge thank you, I know this is a Herculean task and I know you guys are having to go through all the GL codes and finance and everything else, and I know that I've been one of the people that has been, you know, there's several of us in the room who've been constantly prodding on this for a couple of years now, and I know it's a big ask, so I really do appreciate it because I think, you know, understanding if you've got mandatory equipment is, you know, it, when, when I'm looking at it, it's not even looking at which specific team gets more than another, which teams are getting all their mandatory equipment paid for and which ones are the mandatory equipment coming from the families, well, then we need to really think about how we're treating the different sports teams and everything else, as well as all the other activities, like, you know, are we paying for the travel or something, but I do know this is a huge, huge ask because the, the funds are in a million different GL codes in your finance system, so thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, and, um, yeah, as I said, it's very nuanced and just within our first initial meetings, we've had those same discussions, right, and it's peeling back the layers of the onion as we go through, but thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Really quickly wanted to ask, I, I hope, I hope that I'm taking Jackie's question right now, no, I, um, I just wanted to ask really quickly, uh, we do all this, you're doing this, uh, really good work, blah, 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 are we, are we seeing it on the calendar every two years? When are, when are we getting this information updated? I know you said something about a process in place, but I want to make sure that this isn't something that just kind of gets, you know.
So I think as, I think that's something that we can discuss when we get through our first year of analysis, and then we can talk about when, um, when that would be best to collect the information, because again, I think there might be some, I don't know is my short answer, but there might be a better time of year to do this than others, and especially what we try to coordinate too, is the work of the board, so as Dr. Malash puts out a calendar, we kind of try to think logically where it fits best, um, so that, so that makes sense as well.
All right, I'm kind of repeating, but I'm going to say it anyway, I am pretty excited for January, because like, like I can barely contain myself right now.
Did I say January?
Yes, yes, but he didn't, but I, I do think in the end, like, when we look back, like, when I look back on my time on the board, I think this is going to be one of those things where I'm going to be like, I'm really proud that we pushed for this, and this is going to be a monumental thing that we use as a tool, as a district, and so thank you very much for making it happen, and I know it's a huge lift.
So you know, like I said, we have several people, like we put together a small committee of people that are closer to it, who will reach out to others and reach out to others, so, um, when we do present in January, you'll see, um, a few people here with me.
All right, um, so we're good with everything else in education and wellness, or is there anything else?
I think though, um, is this also something we want to say thank you for, the addition of Dr. Haley Gardner to provide, um, exams for students, because that's something else that, um, a few of us had asked for, so just wanted to say thank you for that.
Okay, and with that, we'll move to finance and operations.
Thank you, Dr. Napson Williams, uh, Dr. Scott is not with us this evening, she's actually at a conference, uh, so she does send her regards, um, but she's with, uh, the four counties of other business officials, um, they have day-long meetings and professional development going on, so she sends her regards, um, and sorry that she is not with us this evening. I'm very excited that Mike Nolan and Dennisini, as they often are, are with us to talk about, uh, status report on current capital projects, uh, and then our projection of what we're looking at for the capital projects for the sum for, um, for the board to act on this fall, for us to engage in next summer, so gentlemen, I'll just turn it right over to you.
Okay, Krista, do you have a? It's a, it should be a PowerPoint file, just wanted to give you an update on a couple of projects that weren't complete last time, ah, there you are, so this is the cafeteria now complete, and you can see in the middle, that is the addition section, the middle photo here, and then again, keep going down, there are just some shots from, from the corner of the addition.
All the furniture.
The only thing that's not finished is the exterior, which they're still working on, another couple of weeks.
And that is all the new furniture in as well.
That's true, it's all new furniture that was purchased, right? Let's scroll down. And this is Family Consumer Science, that wasn't complete last time, it's just got their permit, I think yesterday in fact, and I think they've moved in, Mike?
Yep, they have moved in.
So.
They were using the ovens in the meantime, and they were kind of sneaking in, using the oven, sneaking out, um, but yeah, they were, they were getting some use out of it even before everything was completed.
Yeah.
These are, uh, our wrestling mats that, uh, since the last update have been installed, um, that was a, unfortunately, a curbside delivery, so our staff, um, came together and installed them, and then, um, you'll, you'll notice in part of this presentation that next year, we'd like to upgrade the wall mats, um, just to make everything updated, but one thing at a time, right?
Yes. That's good, Krista, right, perfect.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, let me just keep going on, status of our summer projects, again, Skylight Media next summer, Springton Lake and Penn Crest Track, I mean, the, the turf field and the track at Springton, documents in progress, still on schedule for bidding in January. HVAC upgrades are done, we just did a punch list inspection, another couple of weeks to finish those up, the cafeteria, as I just showed you, still got the exterior to do. And again, Penn Crest Indian Lane, I just showed you the, um, Consumer Science, that's now finished. Media Indian Lane, this is our project that's coming up out for bid, in fact, I think we have a bid date, advertisement date of October 23rd for the HVAC projects at Media and Indian Lane for next year. And also tonight, as promised, we have a list of our proposed capital projects for next summer, these were developed based on the feasibility study in 2023, and also meetings with the principals and the facility foreman, and these, we believe, are the priority items for next summer.
Just put the right list up.
Okay, I'm sorry, so, again, I'll go through them quickly, uh, Penn Crest High School, we're going to do phase two of the science rooms. Lost it? Okay, phase two of the science rooms for next summer, now that we know, um, that they're using them, and hopefully we'll find out if there's any bugs in there, and we'll, you know, make those corrections next year, but so far, I'm hearing that they're in great shape, everybody's pretty happy with it, we're going to replace one unit, Mike, I'm not sure what that, where that unit goes.
Yes, so that's, uh, AHU7, which does D-Wing, and then our next item, that coincides with, uh, upgrading D-Wing, that's the only part of our building now that's on pneumatic controls, so we have a, uh, compressor in the boiler room that after we do this upgrade, we can, we can remove that generator, and I, I'm sorry, the compressor, and, um, you know, that's, that's, you know, using, to be more energy efficient, we can get rid of that compressor and really upgrade the system and have everything on the same controls.
And speaking of D-Wing, there's toilet rooms that haven't been active for a number of years, we want to reopen those toilet rooms, there's some definite plumbing issues there we have to correct.
Again, wrestling wall mats, as I showed you in the picture there, um, the wrestling wall mats will, will just, you know, finish that room off very nicely, um, and then we have, uh, repair to gym fans, the fans right now are working, um, they are giant fans, I, I'm sure you've noticed, they have a name that I won't say in public, uh, but that is the, that is the name of the fans, um, but they're working now, they're just on, uh, one control unit as opposed to six, and we just want to separate the controls so we can operate them individually.
Springton Lake, we're going to replace the fire alarm, it's old, needs to be done, having issues with that over the years. Media Elementary, uh, science lab renovation into two classrooms, it's about an 1,100 square foot space right now, and the principal really desires that to be in two spaces, maybe for a classroom, maybe for an SGI, whatever, so we're, yep, do that project.
Glenwood's R22 units.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, I missed my word, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mike, you got probably more of your end of it.
Yeah, so there's, uh, two units at Glenwood, um, that use the old R22 refrigerant and the LGI and the cafeteria, um, so we just want to upgrade them to finish off that building.
Okay, uh, Indian Lane, library ceiling replacement, replace the kitchen ceiling, what we're going to do with those two, we're going to include that work in the HVAC projects,
We have a couple gates, uh, and outside kindergarten courtyard that, um, you know, they've just seen their life, and we just want them to be able to, you know, secure that courtyard properly, and then, um, also in Indian Lane, the basketball courts, we have, have some pictures when we get to it, um, but the basketball courts, just the poles, are starting to bend and the backboard is starting to rust, and we just want to upgrade them, we, we won't be doing the McAdam, um, just the poles and the rims and nets. Okay, oh, moving on to Rose Tree Elementary, um, again, I have some photos after we're through this, uh, the PE shed, again, has just seen its life, um, we're going to actually remove that within the next week or two, just because it's a, quite a nice one, it's, it's empty now, so we're going to take it down, um, and then moving on, we have some district-wide, um, Krista, can you go to the next slideshow or PowerPoint? So, this is, you know, around the district at different areas, and this is just projects that we're going to keep doing year, we, we just did the same thing with carpet and VCT tile, we're going to budget a certain number and just keep chipping away at these things, just so we can keep up, you know, the, the, the school, um, so we have flooring, and then if you keep going down, Krista, uh, Rose Tree, there's a shed that we're going to take down.
I have to say that that is like my dog's favorite thing whenever we go near, that must smell amazing on off-school hours.
So here, uh, Indian Lane, this is just an example around the district, so on the right, you have the picture of the new playground where we installed curbing around the playground to hold the mulch in, on the left, uh, is Indian Lane, and the grass grows into the mulch and, you know, it's, it's hard to contain, so over the years, when we, when we budgeted our number for concrete, we're going to start doing this at all the playgrounds, um, as long, as, as well as, you know, concrete sidewalks that need to be fixed, that's why we'll just budget a certain number and we'll get as much done in that year as we can. Indian Lane, again, there's the basketball net, just an example, that's the worst one, so they don't all look that bad, okay? You know, at this point, you know, don't, I don't, I don't want to look bad, you know, we're showing you some bad things, but then in a couple of months, we're going to, you know, we fix them, right? So, um, so we're going to fix that, and then on the right there is a temporary fence they kind of put up to stop the balls from rolling into parking lot, so another one that we're going to do that we did last year is fencing, we're, uh, like to put like a four-foot-high fence there with a, a mangate and, uh, access for a truck to get back there and plow. These are just some of the doors that we're going to replace, same as we did last summer, um, we'll budget a certain number and we're going to get as many doors replaced as possible with that, within that, um, number, and then we'll just keep doing that, these are just some of the worst doors that, you know, that are at Penn Crest, so they were out, um, we, I met with them yesterday, so we're already moving on, pricing all that out, again, fencing, if you notice out here, we just did, took the netting down and put the cyclone fence in, this is, uh, pen two and three, um, we're going to do the same thing up there this summer. Go down one more, Krista, if you don't mind, so this is Johnson Controls System that we use for our HVAC, so one- So one of our texts is from Johnson Controls and he is really good. You can really dive into this and go really far. But it's 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 a process, right? So this is the old system. And if you go up one more, this is a system that we like to implement. This is what we will see to control HVAC. So, yeah, this is, so if something's off, it'll be red. If it's good, it's green. So going back to, I think, what Bill said and or with our audit on the, I'm sorry, technology. So if we only have one or two people that can control these things, you know, it really limits us. So our building foreman, what we want to do is give them a little more responsibility. So like if you guys, if Dr. Malash, right now I'm cold, I could, I would have to call Matt, which happens, right? I'm cold. He just gives me the look and he goes like this. And I will shoot a text to Matt or Ryan and they can control it remotely. But if I had my computer right here and it was a little more user friendly, you know, we can, we can. Yes.
That's what Mike's all about.
That's what I'm all about.
It's part of the interview last summer.
So just and by the end of 2026, all of our buildings will be Johnson Controls Medisys System. So this will give us a lot more capability to just make adjustments on the fly, which happens every minute of every day. So. One more down, Krista, I think, is, or is that it?
That's the bottom.
Nope, that's. There's a couple more that, you know, pictures doesn't really do justice.
I mean, I think the pictures are sad, right?
They are. They are.
Schools are pretty, you know, please everyone.
Listen, this is a double edged sword. I'm like, well, if I show them all these pictures, they might say, yeah, but our job here is to fix these things, right? So if the kids aren't breaking things and all, we don't have, we don't have jobs, right? So that's why we're here and we're going to fix them as as needed.
I do have one question. Do you want me to wait until you're done?
No, go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you, okay, because it was something that you passed. For for media, if you scroll up just a bit, there's an item for science lab renovation into two classrooms, and then it says one to three year needs. It was in the spreadsheet. And so I was just curious about that because if everything goes according to plan, in three years, we'll have the new school, which would, I think, free up classroom space in some of the elementary schools. So I was just curious about the need for that. If not too long down the road, there would.
I think the need is now. So right now, so last year, that room was not occupied. There are sinks in the middle of that classroom with big countertops. So this year we were able to remove some of them to make some room. But they are occupying part of that classroom now, and I think, I think they need it now. So I don't I don't think we can wait for the K1 center to be open.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't sure because the time I said one to three year needs. And so I know that was done prior to.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that we can do in-house that we try to do in-house. But like I said, we did get it ready for this year so they can occupy it for their needs now. But I think going forward, they have use for that space in other ways.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
And the years that those ranges that are on this chart are what appeared in the GKO study from the 2324 academic year.
Can I add just one curricular thing? We worked really hard knowing the concern that some of these science labs were were being renovated and made into classroom spaces. And I think it's happened really in all of our buildings now. So the CNI department and Bill, we really focused on what our new science curriculum looks like, so that we made sure that the hands on materials, that the whatever resources the students needed could be in their classrooms, could be easy accessible. So that was that was a focus really, because we wanted to continue to have that space. A lot of our schools now have the outdoor spaces as well that we're utilizing. So we just wanted to make sure that we still had those really science rich areas for the students to work in.
We're also doing, I guess, an audit of our stage curtains throughout the district. Just with the flame retardant that's on them, they last about eight to 12 years. And if the ones we have, you can recoat, but if you were to recoat them once or twice, you would have bought new ones. The ones we're looking at getting are synthetic and it's a material that is already fire retardant. So there is no timeline on that. So we're looking at upgrading possibly all of the stage curtains. As well as painting, just like last year. Painting, carpet replacement, like I said, we have lists that are ongoing. I'm on board with all them. I just just know that, you know, we're we're chipping away at the worst of the worst and and, you know, going forward. I think that's all I got for that one. I do want to recognize the Rose Tree Colts are donating a light pole.
Just as as Mike's going through this, this is listed under letter I, under financing operations, what Mike's referring to.
Yeah, they they are donating the pole, the labor, permit costs and everything to put on the back of where the football field is at Rose Tree. They want to put a light at the 50 yard line. They have already had some lights, but it makes it hard to see. It doesn't cover the whole field. So they came to myself at Dr. Malash and asked if they could make this donation and asking the board to approve that.
Do you know anything about sort of, sorry, the control of it? Will any of the neighbors be able to see it?
No, it will face the woods, so it won't face the school. It'll be basically right behind a new playground, facing a field. And as as it will only be on, it'll be on a switch, I believe. I'll confirm that for you, but it will only be on when they're playing. It won't be on a timer where it's on all night long. So it's not like it's going to be on a photo cell or anything like that. So just while they're playing out there. It's a light pole, one pole, one pole. It might have two lights.
Two lights, probably.
Probably two lights. I have the lights too. Three lights, is it Dr. Moss? Three lights on one pole.
There's no township regulation on that or approvals that you need. They're getting permits, okay.
They're handling the permits. They're they're basically handling the whole job. Any questions? Any Philly score?
So one, nothing.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zini, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you.
I think there are more items under finance. I'm not sure.
I think everything else is consent agenda items. So we opened L here now.
So this is the item L. This is, again, the performing arts group subsidizing their own group by paying the fees to put on a musical. And we had agreed that we were going to not make the students pay to license the fees to do the the musicals.
We will, I will talk with Ms. Hogan and Dr. Scott tomorrow. Let's see where we are.
I think I think that's why I thought it was up curriculum education, because then I think it would go up there.
I understand what you're saying. Let me just write that down, too.
All right. So we're good with finance and operations and we will move to human resources. And first up, we have Doc, oh, we have you. All right, here you go.
It's me, Dr. Napson Williams. Dr. Saladino is at an HR workshop. Nope.
He's not here. Dan Harrison's back there.
I talked to Dr. Spoke with Dr. Sal earlier today. Learning a lot about human resources, making good connections, so beneficial. He did prepare some materials for me, so let me pull them up. I would. Thank you, Mrs. Concedine, for asking. So just to, we do this each fall hiring season analysis. Dr. Saladino and his team in HR put this information together for us. Pretty straightforward overview in terms of hiring a faculty. We hired 27 contracted staff members for the opening of the 2526 academic year. Almost double the number of contracted staff that we hired for the 2425 school year. I will point out in a moment, though, those are not, they were not 27 new positions. Some of those were because of retirements and departures and that kind of thing. But just to give you a picture of, this was a large cohort of new certified contracted staff members to the district. In addition, we hired five long term substitutes. The education level of the folks, of those 32 folks who were hired, 15 of them came into us with bachelor's degrees, 14 with master's degrees and three who had at least two master's degrees. 11 of the contracted positions were the result of new positions that were created and approved as part of this year's operational budget. And of the 27 that we hired, 23 had some previous teaching experience, which is is significant. With the the settlement of the collective bargaining agreement in the spring of 2024, we know that we are a destination that experienced teachers want to come and teach to work here, to work with our children and to be a part of this school district. So we were fortunate, especially in comparison to some of our neighbors and some of my peers who struggled a little bit more to get staff to apply. So we got experienced staff, for the most part, who came in and a couple of folks who are brand new out of college and just received their certifications, which is exciting as well. Terms of faculty salary and benefits information, we are straightforward with how we hire and what we budget to go through. We budgeted an expectation for those positions of $2,425,600. The actual costs from what we budgeted were $2,357,200. So a net savings from what we expected to spend on the new staff versus what we are spending on the new staff. And then just an example, you can see what medical plans the different folks selected. 10 selected the gold plan, 17 selected the silver plan and five waived coverage. Administrative hiring overview, we filled three positions. One of them is a new position. Two of them were existing positions, the principal at Springton Lake. Mr. Buderbaugh started with us and has had a really strong start here at Springton. We hired Lauren Daly Clark as the new supervisor in special education, which also replaced an existing position after Dr. Lacoste retired. And then we had a brand new school psychologist position that was added as part of the 2526 budget. And our new school psychologist, Mr. Harrison, started on Monday, started on Monday of this week. For those three administrative salaries, we expected to, we budgeted $463,707. The actual cost to hire those three folks, $423,735. Were net savings from our actual expenditures versus what we expected to spend of just about $40,000. Two of them selected the gold plan. And one selected the silver plan. Additional hiring that took place this summer for the opening of the academic year, 15 paraprofessionals, six custodial positions, two new folks in transportation, four clerical staff members, four food service workers and one health room nurse. Bob also added in here that we have eight student teachers from local colleges and universities who have been placed for the fall semester. We will expect to have more in the spring as well. We are encouraging and reaching out to our our neighbors, colleges and universities. We are definitely always interested in taking on student teachers.
So those were student teachers that student taught in our district, eight of them, and they came to work.
No, no, we have eight student teachers currently.
Oh, okay.
Some of the folks that we did, I could find out, Shelley, I don't know.
No, I just wanted clarification. I was like, wow, that's.
No, no, no. We have eight student teachers.
Oh, great.
Currently who were in our buildings right now. And then still to come, we are in the midst of the Glenwood Elementary School principal hiring process. We have had a very strong interview process for this position. We had a lot of very good candidates. We have two final candidates that Mr. Dockerty, Dr. Saladino and I will meet with next week. We are in the process of finalizing reference checks on both candidates. And then we expect that on the night of the 23rd, we will have a candidate for the board to approve at the legislative meeting. Sorry. We still have to hire a special education teacher here at Springton Lake. One of the additions as part of the budgeting process was a new emotional support position. We did not find the appropriate candidate this summer. We held off on on reposting. We've been having lots of discussion about that. That will be reposted. We still intend to hire that position this year. The chef specialist, which is a new position that was added in our food service department. If you recall, we added it not too long ago. We did not have a real strong pool of candidates with the initial posting. We are looking at the position, looking at the hours, additional discussions taking place with Ms. Lee, with her team, with the business office. We expect that will come forward. We are ongoing hiring bus drivers. We will always need bus drivers and substitute bus drivers. So if you know anybody that's interested in driving a bus to be around our children, please have them reach out. We will always be hiring bus drivers and we will frequently be hiring additional support staff, right? The paraprofessionals who work in different roles within our building. Again, the lifeblood between bus drivers, bus aides and the paraprofessionals of our school district have become much more difficult positions to fill, just based on the reality of the economy, where we are and where we operate. But we always need good people. So if you have good people, even if they want to talk about it, might be interested, have them reach out to us. Bob included a thank you to his team in the HR office. Christine Whited, the human resource specialist, Sammy McNeilus, who's one of the confidential assistants, Missy Finsterbush, the other confidential assistant, and Maria Mercer, our benefits specialist. These four folks are invaluable in terms of what goes on in the day to day operation and support for every staff member that we have in the district. Dr. Saladino has made a really good transition into the HR director position. He is busy, you know, as we talk, you know, Mr. Dockerty was talking about the systemization of things that we do. It's been a big focus of what Dr. Saladino is working on in HR with the advancement of how we do things and the systemization of what goes on in there. So that is the update.
I have one short question.
Yes, I can pull it back up.
No, 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 no. Do we have a spot to advertise on our website for bus drivers and paraprofessionals?
Yes, under under the employment section of the website.
Something from the community?
So the question is the salary information that I showed versus what was budgeted versus what we are expending. Is that salary and benefits or just salary? That's just salary. Yes, ma'am. So there's a question. Oh, there is a question about the the healthcare plans that I showed, which are the gold plan and the silver plan. And the question is, is there a financial contribution from the staff member for the plans? And the answer is yes, there is a financial contribution to the plan. Is there a differential in the contribution that is made based on the silver plan or the gold plan? Yes, there is a differential. And Miss Sabatini, the reason that we do not associate the dollars with it is because it's also different if it is individual, individual or and spouse or family, right? So there's there's three different ranges that are there. And because individual people could be identified because there's not many positions. And as an example, the administrative one, we just list the number that shows each of the plans.
All right. Any other questions? Finance and operations? Anything else?
It's not a question. It's just a quick comment, which is I do really appreciate Dr. Sal, including in that final slide, thanking all of his team. And I think it's a really important thing that the.
And I think it's a really important thing that the board, myself especially, need to be reminded that it takes a whole team to do it. And I really appreciate him acknowledging all those people for the hard work that they're doing.
Okay, so let's move on to uh, policy committee policies for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Napson Williams. So we had our policy committee meeting um, earlier this month and had really good discuss, actually, the policy committee meeting was the last Monday in September, second to last Monday in September. We always do our policy committee meetings the Monday before the legislative meeting to go into the next cycle. Um, really good discussion. We spent a great deal of time um, talking about the generative AI policy. We had a new um, person with us who was uh, participated in, in the meeting virtually from Fox Rothschild, uh, who's our new solicitor. Um, and she was on and participated to give some legal perspective on some of the, the policy discussions that took place coming out this month for second read and approval. Uh, interscholastic athletics, the tobacco and nicotine policy, uh, continued review, federal fiscal compliance. Um, and then federal programs. There was an attachment that goes along with that. It's one of the things that are the folks at Fox Rothschild are reviewing and updating information. Um, we will be discussing those on the twentieth of this month. Um, and then we'll also be discussing controlled substance paraphernalia, and again, the generative AI um, policy. Now, I know one of the things, um, Mr. Dockerty, as he talked about the, the piece and the question, you know, about the, how we will share this information, then how often? And then, Hillary, you asked about how often will we update you? That's one of the things that we will talk about, systematizing through the policy committee, right? Is that part of an AR? Is that part of our bylaws? Is that part, how do we clearly state that the expectation is that there's some sort of formal update or some, how's that information that's in there? Because one of the many things that we have discussed over the last couple of years is all of this needs to exist beyond all of us who are sitting at the table, right? That this is just the expectation and becomes the standard operation, and this is how the district runs, so they can be put into place there. So anytime that we go through and talk about these, the next piece or the follow-up is, how do we officially systematize that and put that in there so that it's there? Any of the other folks who were at the policy meeting that wanted to?
Well, actually, I just have a question in light of our um, discussion earlier on technology. I know that we've had conversations about the AI policy and waiting until we have input, et cetera, et cetera. Do we, or can we start thinking about just putting something in place now? So that everybody's on the same page now? It's something that is going to have to be updated pretty regularly as things continue to change. But making sure that our district knows what they, what the expectations are, what the do's and don'ts are right now, I think is critically important.
We absolutely, yeah, absolutely. You know, like I said, it's, it's going to be a focus of where we are on the twentieth to have that piece.
And I know we don't want to just throw policies around and, you know, just throw anything on paper, but.
Knowing that there's a.
Yeah, knowing that there's, it's, yeah.
Right, I hear what you're saying. Like a starter policy.
All right, so we're good with policy stuff? Ken?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to report as the DCIU rep on the process that's been rather public around uh, the executive director. Cert.
This is, this is not uh, with the policy committee. This is something separate. This it's not on there, but it would usually be uh, what do we call it, board? Board work or something like that. Yeah, so just so people who are listening understand.
Right, right. It's not a, it's not a policy. It's business of the board. Um, so uh, at the beginning of September for those her retirement to be effective August twenty-twenty-six, she chose the moment that she did to announce her resignation or retirement uh, in order to allow the board and the administration to do a search in a timely way for a a highly um, uh, uh, a, a, a position with a very small pool, really, of eligible and interested people. Um, and to do it thoroughly and professionally at a time before other similar positions would come open in a school year. And at a time um, before an election that's coming up in which it was expected that at least four to six and maybe more of the current board of fifteen would be changing and new people would have to be reappointed, probably not until February or March, and that would really compromise any search for the new executive director. Um, the process is moving very quickly, and that led to some uh, concern by some members of the districts that are part of the intermediate unit board and uh, their boards uh, around uh, the speed of the search and who's conducting the search and how the position was made public. Um, and we had a very lively discussion about a week ago uh, that was on the public, that was a part of the public meeting in response to a letter that was sent by the Delk, um, Pendelco superintendent to all the other superintendents um, asking them to consider um, oppose, you know, asking their board members at the DCIU to oppose the process as it's been set up. So that led to a very public discussion a week ago about the process and the reasons for why it's taken the shape that it has. For, I think, as a result of that, uh, it's been clear that the human resources department of the DCIU that's going to conduct the, the search is going to move forward and has been moving forward with conducting the search. Uh, and at the same time, have made it very clear that they are not passing judgment on anybody. Their role is strictly to pass along the information to the DCIU board members, who are the only ones who are going to be making a decision uh, on any of the candidates who submit an application. So uh, that was, that was reassuring. I've already explained a little bit about the, the timeframe of this and why it has been decided to do it in this uh, fast manner. And I think uh, my sense is that's also fine. And I, and I think the administration heard a number of board members concerned with the fact that the job was posted before the board saw the job description. We knew, we knew that the um, executive director position was about to be posted. We knew that the resignation had happened, but we hadn't seen the job description until after it was posted, and that was duly noted. And there was a very contentious conversation at the meeting about all these issues. We also had our next, the way it works with the DCIU is that the first meeting of the month is the legislative, and the second meeting of the month is the work session for the following month to give more time. So we had the work session yesterday, which these issues did not come up at all. We dis, we discussed the process. The HR director presented, you know, the procedural logistical process. The board members asked a lot of good questions. We all wanted to make sure we were participating in a way, you know, to move this forward as quickly and accurately and successfully as possible. The DCIU is posting on their website the the guidance, guiding document of the qualities that the community has already responded to. Uh, there was a public survey. I shared it, I think it was shared with the district. I think we put it out there as a district. Uh, any interested parties could fill it out. Any board member, any, anybody could fill it out if they were aware of it, and we tried to publicize it as broadly as possible through each of the districts. Um, there were a couple of hundred responses. That survey is now closed. Um, there were a couple of responses, a hundred responses to that. The board members of the DCIU met with HR to each explain what their priorities were. And the soup, all fifteen superintendents had an opportunity to provide um, feedback directly to the HR office to be consolidated for the board to consider as well. So we have all that information and with those documents and most of the, the two hundred survey results, the feedback is consolidated on the website as well as the timeline that we currently have.
I have a quick question. Do you um, as a board, have you discussed looking at the policy for hiring a new uh, executive director to ensure that the steps are clear for everyone and that you read the job description before it goes to anyone? Has, is that?
We.
In the works?
I think I think it will be. It, I think the meeting a week ago is still kind of raw, and I think the second meeting that we had yesterday is advancing this current process. I mean, that, that job posting thing, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it now, so it's done. But we, but for the future, you're absolutely right. That's something we have to make sure the policy is clear about.
Think that there's already a policy, so it was either followed or not followed. But.
Right.
Just to be sure, maybe it's something the board should look.
Yeah, no, we should, we should look at that. You're absolutely right. Um, so the timeline is still on track. Um, uh, applications are being accepted um, through October twelfth at eleven fifty-nine PM. Exactly. That's a Sunday night. And starting Monday morning, board members are reviewing all the packets that have come in. And the goal is to make a decision by the end of November. Uh, three rounds of interviews um, and a number of different times when we'll all be meeting together to try and figure this out. So I just wanted you to know where it seems like we are, that there's been this controversy. You might hear about it from other folks. And I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions from anybody uh, going forward that, you know, that I can do within confidentiality. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we will end uh, this work session.